Village of Salado, Reginald Board of Alderman Meeting. Salado Beautiful Building 301 North State Coach Salado, Texas, August 1st, 2019 at 6:30 PM. The agenda. Call to order. Call the roads, City Secretary.
Call the roads.
Here.
We have first and next man.
Here.
And then the zipper.
Here.
All they call.
Here.
Here. It's good to see you back, Mike. It's good to see you back. Unless we didn't have any bell money up to get you back. No. I mean, the Michael's got hit. All right, we're going to do the invocation next, and we have a very special young man with us today. Hi, Jim.
Hello.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you for allowing me to do it. Let us pray. Dear Lord, be with this board as they meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. Help them recognize their responsibility to the past, the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek your blessings on their deliberations, and on all efforts here today, may we all act wisely and well. In your name, amen.
Thank you, Jimmy. Has well done. Your Honor, I'd like to introduce two volunteers tonight that have come forward to do, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Texas flag. The first is Claire Nagel. Please come. Claire's a second grader. She's fixing to start soccer, and she's in Salado Independent School District. And next, in support, is Braden Nagel. He is a fifth grader. He's a shortstop on a nationally renowned team that travels all over the world. And thank you for, to their mother, Sarah, for cleaning them up and bringing them up here tonight. All right, so.
Let us stand with the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas flag.
Go ahead.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag, Texas allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Is that tone up here? Yes. Come on up.
I told you, but it was tricky. It was tricky, wasn't it?
Come on this. And you come on Amber's side. Now, this is just about the way it is in how we do meetings. And go on here. Now, Frank and Amber, would you please stand up?
Hello.
Well, you have just become the mayor pro temp. And.
She can stay. I'm going home.
And you just have to come. Older lady.
You have to be super bossy, okay? I'm already saying to my dad I'm bossy.
Did y'all hear that? Little conversation out there. Amber said, "You have to be super bossy." Now, Kim, I'll let you hear what she said. Say it again. She said, "I already am." Just my brother.
I have one more at home.
You got one more at home, brother? Two brothers and a girl?
Mm-hmm.
Three?
No. Two.
Oh, two brothers and one daughter. Sister.
No, I don't have a sister.
No, you're the sister. It's okay. It's about the way the conversation goes up here. Well, I'm so glad you gave an excellent job. Thank you very much, Mike. Thanks for giving the floor, Sarah. Really. Gosh, Mom cleaned him up pretty good. That's good. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks. Good job.
Our two citizens communications, but they're at a later time in the order, so we'll save those till then. The consent agenda. A, approval of minutes of the Reginald Board of Alderman Meeting of July 18th, 2019. Do I hear a motion to accept them?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Oppose likewise. Passes. Status report. These are all, these reports, this is the first of the month, and we put everything in here, so it's going to be a little bit longer than you do, but this is going to be a very interesting meeting tonight. The straighteners, status reports. Hi, Don, how are you doing?
Well, Mayor. Mayor, members of the board, members of the public, let me run through several items. I've got a lot on the agenda tonight. First of all, as far as the wastewater project goes, we've slowed down a little bit as far as those folks connecting, still hovering around that 39% mark as far as the number of properties that are connected, or in the process of connecting to the wastewater system. I understand when we were giving these numbers, we're in discussions with plumbers who may be in the process of getting quotes for seven or eight properties, so we include those numbers because they're actively in the process of getting quotes and getting contracts that let to basically get their properties connected. So, still a pretty decent number, but there's still more to go, and we're working with those folks to move that process forward. Thought you might be interested in looking at the way things ended up financially. We're in the process of closing out the financials as far as the project goes, the wastewater project construction piece goes. And the construction of the wastewater collection system's original scope, we've alluded to this a couple of times, but we came in about $8,900 under the original contract cost as far as the original scope. You know, we had several contract amendments that were not part of the original scope, and that, of course, added to the project cost, but when you consider the additional work scope and the various supplemental funding sources, mainly the school district funding, the net construction cost actually came in about $71,000 over the original contract cost, which for a 3,003,000 project is not a bad number. The large part of that overage related to, number one, the resurfacing of Church Street, which we did. Of course, we also had some things like guardrail and things along those lines that were put in, but in large part, we did very well on the collection system piece. Also, the same held true with the wastewater treatment plant. The original scope of work came in about $33,000 under the original contract cost of $4.8 million. With the additional scope of work, which in large part was the decommissioning of the State Coach Treatment Plant, the net construction cost came in at about $125,000 over the original contract cost of $4.8 million. So, things came out pretty well as far as the wastewater project goes, construction cost-wise. Status report on the community notification system. As you know, we launched that system on July the 10th. This is a new system that the village has in place that we will be building on as we progress. It basically is a system that's going to allow us to contact residents via email, via text, and via telephone, and that's either hard line or cellphone. The system can be used to deliver emergency information relating to floods, tornadoes, wildfire, etc. We've talked about its usage policy in the past, along with out-group messages related to road closures, public hearings, and special events. We don't want to overuse this system because what happens is that people become somewhat target hardened to it, and they don't pick up those texts, they don't answer those emails when they go through. So, we're going to try to limit our use of that system as much as possible, so it's only really going and being used for vital, important information. We're going to be putting a portal on our website in the coming days where you'll actually have an opportunity to log in, and you can add and subtract email addresses and your cellphone numbers. But I think it's a very worthwhile system. I think the voice piece is very worthwhile as far as placing phone calls to people's cellphones. I think it'll be a good system that'll help educate our people and help notify our people and enhance our communication with our residents. Status report on the sanctuary development. Construction plans and the construction plan for Phase 1 of the residential development are in-house, as you know. This is that area off of Royal Street. It's the residential part of the sanctuary development. It has gone through now two reviews. Just minor comments came out of the second review, and we received a response late this afternoon on those, so we're reviewing those comments. Thought you might be interested in seeing some of the details on this as far as the way the lot size will break out. This is Phase 1. The entire residential development piece up there at the corner, this is Catty Corner to the church up on Royal Street, the entire development's going to have somewhere in the neighborhood of about 350 homes, thereabouts, when all is said and done. In this first phase, 15 lots are anywhere from .0 acres to .10 acres. 157 lots fall within the range of basically a tenth of an acre to two tenths, and then over two tenths, we've got 20 lots in this first phase. There's about 20 acres of open space, parkland, and drainage space in that particular first phase of this development. A construction plan will be presented to BOA on August the 18th for review and approval for the development agreement. As you know, and we've talked about this before, if it's in compliance with the agreement, if it's in compliance with their ordinance, there's really not much we can do. Along the lines of the sanctuary development, I wanted to let you know, if you could please mark your calendars for the 29th of August. The 29th of August, we're planning to have an executive session briefing with our city legal counsel to give those new members of the board an opportunity to ask questions about the sanctuary agreement. They were not involved in its development and its approval several years ago, and we felt that it would be prudent to give them an opportunity to be briefed on that agreement, the parameters, the requirements, what things have to be done, what things, you know, the agreement itself calls for. Along the lines of sanctuary in this particular part of the agreement, I want to take a minute and talk to you all about something that we're dealing with right now with them. We alluded to this when we announced that they had filed their first piece, and that is the concern about how that development's going to be coming on to Royal Street. Right now, the way the development is positioned, it shows it coming into Royal Street as somewhat of an angle. You've got a 90-degree turn, you've got that dog leg that goes to the left, and if you're going out of town on Royal Street. And they show that hitting the intersection almost at an angle, basically facing the church property, going straight towards the church property as opposed to any type of T-intersection. One of the things we've asked them to do is to redraw that intersection and to make it a T, because our feeling is, from a public safety standpoint, it makes sense. With that T-intersection, it's going to come stop signs, and it's got to. I don't think you can have the T without the stop signs. We think the T is probably the safest way, really the only realistic way to come in and out of that subdivision, considering the volume of traffic that will be generated when that area is fully developed. Keep in mind, in full development, the second phase of this residential subdivision, which is coming down the road, is going to have an exit on 2268. So, some of that traffic obviously will filter out to 2268, but this first phase, as it goes, is going to be feeding straight in to Royal Street. And our feeling is that we needed to take a serious look at making that a T and making that a three-way stop. And I wanted to get your thoughts on that, if I can just kind of pose that question to you tonight to see your feelings about that. That's a big traffic change up there, but I will tell you, it'll accomplish a number of things. Number one, you typically don't put stop signs up for speed control. That's not why stop signs go in place. Stop signs go in place because of other potential road conditions, hazards that may exist. In this situation, the configuration of that intersection is the hazard that justifies the three-way in our mind. The one thing it will do, though, is it will slow traffic down. I can assure you of that, and that, of course, is a big issue up there. If you've worked up there, Jimmy, I know you guys at the church have talked to us about that, and we had issues up there during the wastewater construction as far as trying to slow traffic down. We're sensitive to the fact that there's also a lot of school traffic up there at that intersection during the school year, so it's going to potentially slow down some of that school traffic. But again, we feel it's probably the only viable approach towards coming into that intersection with what we're looking at as far as the growth and development. Keep in mind, you've got 170 acre, 170 lot subdivision that's going to be coming online in that general area, too, just around the corner, so there's additional traffic coming in. So, all things considered, we wanted to toss that idea at you. This is basically the way it would look as far as the T itself goes. There would be a couple of islands at the intersection, and we haven't decided whether we want to make those islands paint or whether we want to make those islands stand-up islands. I think the one probably coming out of the development itself will probably end up being a stand-up island. There probably will be a paint island near the intersection, Catty Corner to the church. But, you know, we wanted to get your thoughts on it. How do y'all feel about that idea?
Which traffic code are they looking at for compliance with? Is this a text dot or a unified traffic code?
Yes, unified is what they're looking at.
And then there's some elevations because that turn there is actually super elevated towards, you'd come on it, it's going to have to be reworked itself on that. And then the drainage that comes out of the Methodist property, pond's right in there and has an outlet, so that, all that will have to be looked at in detail to make that thing work.
Well, that's why they, that's why they looked at this, they looked at this configuration per se, because they're aware that there's a detention pond that's actually, that's part of the church development on the front side at that end, and so this was the best way they felt like they could make it. They were very amenable to it. It will be a gated subdivision. If you're not familiar with this plan, that sanctuary development will be gated as far as the residential piece. There actually is about a 1,600-foot gatehouse that you'll run into not far after you enter the property itself, and there's a turnaround if you're not able to get in, that you can come back out on to Royal Street, but.
Where does, where on here is the toll gates go?
The door. There could be a couple of toll gates on this street, to be honest with you.
That was humor.
Yes, it was, it was dope with you, but I just think you're looking at another 300 trips coming out of this subdivision, minimum, and I think that if you do the counts on fair subdivision at 174, you're probably talking about another 200, 250 minimum out of that area. And yes, when sanctuary comes fully online, I'm sure they'll lose some of that traffic out 2268, you know, which would be fine, but you're still, even at that, looking at some additional growth and development. You've got some growth taking place out Royal, out in the county. You've got some plaques that are in the process right now, down towards Blackberry and Royal Street that are coming in. They're not large pieces, but again, there are quite a few lots that are involved in that, so we just wanted, I mean, a three-way stop's a big thing for a town like this, especially at that intersection. I just want to make sure you guys want.
Well, you know, the question that drives this whole thing is, how are you going to get this traffic down into Main Street, and where does it go? And you've got four lanes coming into a two-lane traffic pattern, and, you know, we're going to have to look at expanding traffic flow on Royal all the way from.
And there really is not any room to widen Royal Street going down. You have, you have literally homes that are very, very close to the roadway right now as it is. There's not a lot of playroom with widening Royal Street. You certainly don't have much room to play as you get down into the business district because you've got a lot of activity down there. It's going to be, it's going to be an interesting situation from a traffic standpoint, and then you've got to try to figure out how to get those guys onto Main Street easily.
Yeah.
You know, we are, as you know, as part of the, part of the Main Street project, that little half-baked cut, curb cut going right there by Rosanki's coming onto Main Street, that goes away and it becomes a true T-intersection at that area, which will help, I think, a little bit, but that said, you're still talking about a lot of vehicles, especially during peak periods, school times especially.
I got a question for you. Royal Street is probably one of the worst streets in Salado. So, is the street going to be rebuilt to support this traffic, or are we going to keep the same old potholes, the same old, I mean, rural street's pretty rough shape.
The county, the county has on their books, at our request, and we have an agreement in place where they're going to come in, and they'll probably end up doing it towards the end of the summer, if not early, early in the fall, where they're going to come in and chip seal and then put a new surface on that. As far as reconstruction of that street, no, not at this stage of the game. Will that be needed in the future? Yes. We talked about that back when we were doing the wastewater project, and that street has been in need of actual reconstruction for some time, but the costs at this stage of the game for that are prohibitive considering our budget. The best thing you can do at this point is just try to maintain a decent surface on it and try to maintain it in between those times to put a new surface on it.
Saying one more thing, are they also considering the school buses?
Yes.
That is going to, additional traffic.
And this should handle, this radius should handle the school buses about that much of a problem, I've got it. But it's going to make them stop.
Big change. Okay, thank you.
Don, how do we get this picture out into the, into the public so they know?
Get the newspaper. Get the newspaper. We can put it online, too.
Okay.
Don, do you think that they would go ahead, instead of waiting for the second development, go ahead and make an outbreak now for the Florence Road, not Florence, but Hollin Road?
Well, there is a, there, one of the things that we have asked them to do, and they've agreed to, and they've gotten a text dot, is there will be a construction entrance that will go off of 2268, and our desire, we told them, we want to see the construction traffic come in and out of that construction off 2268 and not up Royal Street and into the development. And so, they've done that, and they've gotten approval from text dot, at least temporarily at this stage of the game for that area, for that construction entrance. They know they're going to have to build that out in Phase 2. It will not be an emergency exit, or should I say, a regular exit for residents in the subdivision, this time, Mayor. Text dot says if you're going to do that, you have to move it, and they're not ready to build that.
Since the contractor is going to install the proposed stop signs, I don't want your proposed stop signs. I want lighted stop signs. You can do that with solar. Any other questions to Don?
So, that's on sanctuary, which leads us where we're talking about lots. Let's go to lot sizes, and that is the Minimum Lot Size Task Force. We have a community forum scheduled for this coming Tuesday, August the 6th, at 7:00 at the Municipal Building. The purpose of this forum is to gather input on lot sizes for future residential development. As you know, the task force had a very good meeting with the board, also had a great meeting with Plan and Zoning Commission. Citizen input will be used by the task force in the development of future lot size recommendations that will be made for the Board of Alderman. As you know, those recommendations will come to the board, you then, I'm sure, will ship them to D and Z, and they'll go through a public hearing process at D and Z, and also another public hearing process at the Board of Alderman. So, there'll be more opportunities for people to speak if they haven't had the opportunity to do so. If you cannot make Tuesday's meeting, feel free to email us, and you can email your comments to my office at dburgson@saladotx.gov, and we will circulate those to the task force. But they're working hard, and we're interested to see what type of comments we get from the public on this. Status report on the School Resource Officer Program. The village is accepting applications for the SRO, the School Resource Officer position, which you approved just a couple of meetings ago. The Salado ISD, as you know, is going to be participating in the hiring process, but the chief of police will have a final decision on who's hired. The new officer will be required to undergo some special SRO training prior to getting on the job. The cost of the officer will be shared by the Salado School District. About 65% will be picked up by the school district, about 35% by the village. Status report on the Main Street Project. A little bit of a modification to talk to you about, as they've moved forward into Main Street and waded deeper into this project, they're kind of modifying their approach towards completion, and the game plan is this. Right now, as you know, they've transitioned to the east side of Main Street. They're north of Thomas Arnold Road. They're making good progress putting in that drain pipe. They fit very little rock. They've been negotiating today, and I'm sure they'll negotiate a little bit for tomorrow with the Rock Creek period, trying to get the pipe positioned to the point that they can jump over the creek and continue on north. Their goal is to try to get as much done on the east side going north before they need to come back and finish out the south side of Main Street, and this is a little bit of a deviation from their original plan. They're sensitive to the community festivals we've got going on in the fall, and they want to get out of South Main Street as soon as possible. So, what they're going to do is, they're going to try to get as far as they can get down Main Street on the east side going north, and then they're going to find a date that they can come back, and they're going to come in and they're going to work on both sides of Main Street, from the south end of Main Street all the way up to Rock Creek, and get all of the sidewalk that's scheduled to go in, get all the curb and gutter that's scheduled to go in, and get all the lighting that's scheduled to go in, and get all of that work done on both sides of the road before January 1. January, as you know, is a magic date for them, because I believe on the 5th, they will be closing Main Street at Rock Creek, and we'll have a detour in place, but it'll be closed for about 40 days while they go ahead and remove that Rock Creek crossing. But I guess the good news is, we'll have sidewalk, and we'll have lighting, some lighting. How much of that for stroll, we'll see. As you know, stroll this year is the first two weekends in December, and they're probably going to be wrapping up work during that timeframe. We've told them if they're not done with stroll in time for stroll with this particular piece of the work, what accommodations can they make for us on that end? And they have said that they will stop the contract work on Friday and Saturday. The Thursday, Friday, and Saturday have strolled the first weekend, and then the second weekend, the Friday and Saturday, and they will move equipment out of the way so there are no issues, and they'll make sure that the public access is not a concern as well as the vehicular access. So, they're working to accommodate us as far as that situation goes. After they get done with that, with that crossing, the Rock Creek crossing, they're going to be jumping back and forth on Main Street and getting the rest of the project done. So, they're making progress. They feel they're on schedule at this point. They're glad to be past the creek, much like we were when we put the collection system. The creek was, was a sensitive piece, and that was the biggest problem because there's a lot of rock and a lot of voids and a lot of concerns, but they got out of there without any issues, which is good, and now they're moving forward and hitting dirt, and they like that. We again remind motors to use caution because we're, we're in narrow areas right now, and we have traffic that's restricted. Follow the direction of the traffic control, please, and note the police department's out there, and they will wipe tickets and have written tickets. Status report on future annexations. The village staff is working with legal counsel on the development of timelines and service plans for our next round of annexations, and these are going to be three separate planned script annexations. Areas to annex include portions of the state right away on Interstate 35, and that's south of town. FM 2484 going west as far as we can, and then FM 2268 going east as far as we're comfortable on. Annexation process expected to be initiated prior to September 1, 2019. Should take about 90 days to complete of all those plans. Status report on Advisory Board vacancies. We have four vacancies that exist on our tourism advisory board. We have the last names of those members, Lancel, Prellup, Shipman, and Lowry. I will tell you, Lancel, Prellup, and Shipman have expressed interest in reappointment. Lowry has not. He's got a busy schedule right now that he's not able to commit to, and so he's basically stepping down from the board. So, three of the four board members, as I mentioned, have expressed interest in reappointment. As you know, we've got to fill six positions on the Economic Development Advisory Board that will be chaired by Mayor Pro Temp Kochman, so those are open right now, no incumbents to consider. Then we have two vacancies that exist on the Parks Advisory Board due to recent resignations, and that's Will and Amy McLean, so those two positions. So, that said, for all these positions, we're issuing a public call tonight. We'll get a notice in the paper, it'll be on our website, that anybody who's interested in serving on any of these boards and any of these positions needs to get ahold of us as soon as possible and get an application in. We'd like to see the applications for their positions in hand by August the 12th, because I think, as we discussed, at least with the EDC piece, we've discussed the idea of doing interviews in hand with these applicants, to give you an opportunity to meet the individuals that you're considering for appointment before you actually take any action, and we're planning to do those interviews as part of the 18th meeting. So, if you know anybody that wants to serve on any of these boards, please let us know. The applications are available online. You can pick them up here at City Hall, but they do need to have an application in place in order to be considered, so please let folks know about that. Amber, the last meeting, you asked us to gather some information as far as the library goes and sales tax, and this is what we picked up. The library has been gracious and has been very open in giving us their information. Their year-to-date sales tax collected shows someone in the neighborhood of about $350,000. They budgeted collections and sales tax for this fiscal year of about $345,000. Their total operating budget is about $351,000, so you can see sales tax literally makes up their budget. They've only got $5,000, $6,000 that's not that, that comes from donations. As far as their reserves go, their reserves are all in investments right now from what we understand, so those reserves are in the neighborhood of about $347,000. The village of Salado, how does that compare? We've collected year-to-date $432,000, and the sales tax budget is about $407,000, and our total operating budget is $1.1 million, and our fund balance right now is about $915,000. So, you can see sales taxes is just one of the pieces that helps fund our city operations, but that is the information we have. They're representatives of the library district here, if you have any questions of them, but again, we'd like to thank them for providing the information. Amber, is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay. Fantastic. And that's it, Mayor.
Congratulations, Mr. Edwards, and I may have missed this, but when is sanctuary going to start?
There, I was told that they have, have the site bids in place, that they have contractors that are about to hire, and as soon as we get the construction plans approved, we can I was told that they have site bids in place, that they have contractors that are about to hire. And as soon as we get the construction plans approved, we can see construction starting within the next 45 to 60 days. So they're going to move pretty quick. The first phase is expected to take anywhere from two to five years to develop. Then they'll come in with the second phase and the residential piece. At the same time, keep in mind, there's a companion part of that development, and that is what I would call the mixed-use development that's going to be going over where Wildfire was and back across the highway. That's going to have a mix of residential and some commercial and even hotel and entertainment venue. And we've been told that the development of that plot and the construction plans is nearing completion. They've not given us a date for filing, but I met with Mr. Slasky last Friday and had a very good discussion with him, that he says it's well down the road.
I have a question, Don. The meeting that you talked about as seeing that Sanctuary play on the 18th? That's a Sunday. We're not meeting on Sunday.
15, 15, my bad.
Okay, just making sure we didn't have a meeting on the 15th.
I'm on your own, Meyer, 15. I hate it when meetings fall on the first.
Just making sure.
It is the 15th. But the 29th, please mark your calendars. That's a special meeting, and we're going to meet everybody here. The purpose of that meeting, we're going to be getting with P&amp;Z too. So you know, the 29th meeting is, that's going to be a joint meeting in the beginning with P&amp;Z and the Board of Alderman. And what we're going to do is do kind of a zoning 101 briefing for you all, and give you about 45 minutes worth of what zoning's about, the various elements, things you need to consider when you go through the zoning process. We're going to include about 15 minutes in there on open meetings training with legal counsel. I will be there doing the briefing on the zoning piece too. And then out of that, we'll let P&amp;Z go, and then y'all will go in the executive session and have your briefing on Sanctuary.
Don, why is that an executive session on Sanctuary?
Because it's legal counsel, and they may be offering legal advice, and lawyers don't offer legal advice in public.
Okay, Don, thank you very much. Light of Police Status Report.
I have a few questions still for Don. Don, on the future annexations part, you said that we're going to be going down some of the right-of-ways. What's the purpose of that?
The purpose of that is to try to establish a foothold in that particular area to potentially allow some of those other properties down there, if they want to come into the village, to do so easily. As you know, we're a general law city, which means we can only annex property contiguous to us. But we do satellite annexations, which is a difficult process to do. But normally, we follow voluntary petitions that have to be contiguous to our city limits. So by extending out in that particular area, it opens the door for some of those properties to more easily come in if they choose to do so.
Has anybody expressed an interest in being annexed out there that you've talked to?
We periodically get phone calls from property owners and developers down there wanting to know what it takes and wanting to know if they could. We've had some folks express some interest down south, but just inquiries, nothing serious, I would say.
And then on the Advisory Board vacancies, are we, do we have a Facebook page for the village that we could put that on? Or put it in Celado people so that we get this out a little bit more than just the newspaper?
Yeah, we're fixing to launch a Twitter page. We don't have a Facebook page at this stage of the game, but we're fixing to hit Twitter. And we can certainly try to add it. We try to stay off of some of those social media sites, just because the content sometimes can be a little controversial. But from the standpoint of Twitter and Facebook and website, we can certainly look at a Facebook page if that would be desired.
I'm just trying to make sure that we have all the bases covered for people that would like to be interested in doing something like that, because I've had people say, "Oh, I didn't know that," or "I wasn't aware of it," and I just was like...
Well, this is actually is one of the things we're able to use this notification system for. Is we're able to place those phone calls and send out those texts and emails. So that would be a good use of the system.
Cool. And my last question is my favorite topic right now.
Okay, what's that?
Yeah, how's our signs doing out there on the interstate?
The signs are doing good. Let me tell you what I think we're in the process of doing. We are in contact with a contractor who we're going to meet with hopefully next week to literally give us a bid to do the project turnkey. The electrician that we are working with went up to Alveretto and met with some individuals that they were directed to meet with by the folks who were working on the port. And the consensus based on that meeting is it is better to have a professional come in and do the lighting project, turnkey, and get it done. And so we'll have a better feel, I believe, after our site meeting next week, that they don't think it's going to be a significant issue.
Okay, so best-case scenario, we could have it...
Best-case scenario, my goal is to bring you a proposal on the 15th, excuse me. Here you go, Amber. On the 15th is to bring you a proposal that hopefully will let you all pull the trigger and we can get it done.
Just FYI, I might hear on the 15th. Have a work trip.
Thanks, Don.
Sure.
Any other questions, please? Okay, now, Celado Police Status Report. How are you doing, Pat?
Great. Evening. Howdy, y'all.
Ready?
Ready for you? All right, so a month of June, or should be July. July. We did have 329 calls for service last month, 61 citations, 56 of which were warnings. We had one arrest with a DWI, 16 total reports, nine supplements. I did obtain a burglary warrant on the suspect involved in the two burglaries that we had on the 15th. He is currently, we believe, based on reports from Crime Stoppers, he is in South Carolina. I called my friends with the U.S. Marshals Task Force. They've got the agents up in that area currently looking for him. But he did burglaries in Colleen that day as well, stole a car from Fort Hood, did our burglaries, and we were able to get him through the help of Colleen PD. My burglar unit, I used to be in charge of, helped me out immensely, as did Temple PD with running fingerprints through AFIS and also the citizens of Celado. Without their help, we wouldn't have had all the affirmative links to identify this suspect. We had numerous people come, and we do appreciate all the calls, because it placed him in the stolen vehicle here in Celado, which also allowed us to link him to the burglaries. So without the help of the citizens and paying attention, and really as a matter of people saying, "Hey, I don't recognize that person's car in my neighbor's driveway," and they wrote the license plate number down, and very helpful. And it's truly community helping us solve crimes, and that's what we love about the community. Paying attention to what's going on. Our calls for service, again, pretty much staying about the same from past months. Traffic offenses, again, the citations. We had four crashes last month that we took our reports on. So a little bit down, and that just varies. We didn't have much wet weather, and that's when they tend to pick up. We get a little rain, and everyone loses their mind on the highway, so. Priority one response times came down significantly, about a minute, a little over a minute and a half response time. So some things I had put in place for the officers to make them more readily available, especially for priority ones. Just changing some mindsets of how things were done in the past and how we're doing things in the future. Priority two, similar, not much change. And again, some of those priority twos are crash injury, non-injury accidents on the highway, which if they're on the opposite side of the highway, we've got to go all the way down to Amity to get to them, so. Priority three, right on the money, again, about 4:13. For the cops program, we're working on, first of all, ID cards. So the old card is the one that says "Police" across the front. We changed those to a volunteer ID card. So we're in the process of switching everybody out, getting pictures and updating those. We've been working on preparing for the Serena Festival and the parade with that, and also the Scottish Gathering Parade. We'll be using the help of our citizen volunteers to help us out with traffic control and so forth. Two new volunteers, Lisa Arnold, Suzie Atkinson. Still working on those Operation Heat, "Are You Okay?" And the big thing is our house and security watches, which apparently a lot of people didn't know we had the security house watches, and we got the information out. They've increased quite significantly. I've also found, within our own CAD software, Report Management System, that we can do it on the computer terminals for the officers. So it makes it easier on them. They don't have to carry paperwork around with them. They just go in, pull up the list of houses. When they get there, they click on it and add some comments. And so we're making sure the officers are very active along with our cops. This is the suspect I was talking about. He does love his mom, apparently. But these are pictures that we got from his Facebook page before he shut it down. So again, one warrant was issued. Took us about two weeks to get that through the District Attorney's Office. I did talk to Sergeant Pence. He's working out something with the library come October, I believe. Is that right? I mean, October, he's going to help out. We're going to do some scary stories in the park. Sergeant Pence, if you didn't know his background, he's written some children's books, and he taught reading classes in CopperSCO School District, so he's volunteered to help out with that. So just trying to get out there more in the community. And I know I've received a lot of really positive comments about seeing our officers out in the community areas where they weren't necessarily seen before. So the officers are following along with the directives to be out there and be more community-minded.
Is that the conclusion?
Yes, sir.
I understand that some of the stuff that was stolen, you were able to recover?
We did recover some of the items. One of the victims, some personal items, heirloom-type items from her mother. So we were able to recover that. Not everything. We did get a TV back and some jewelry, so. Which is a rarity at times. But speaking of that, there is a program called Report It. It's reportit.com, where you can go on as a citizen and take pictures of all your valuables, serial numbers and so forth. It's free of charge, and it's basically online storage that they do not release any of your information without your consent. If something were to be stolen, lost, or otherwise, we can use those pictures and the identifiers to track the items. So things like jewelry that is unique and so forth. But literally go through your whole house, take pictures of everything, download it on that website, reportit.com. And then we can gain access to it with your permission, so we can add it to the report and get that information out. So if something was pawned at a pawn shop, we can identify that more readily without you necessarily visually identifying the items. So it's a service provided free of charge. Leeds.com or Leeds Online is a program for law enforcement that allows us access to pawn shop receipts and so forth, that we can see what people are pawning, and if it's something that's identifiable from the reportit.com. It makes it easier to get that before they sell it, so.
Other questions, Pat?
I got a question for you. When you mentioned, I think it was 64, people pulled over, 51 warnings issued?
Yeah, 59, I believe.
Whatever that number was. Is that like... Are the majority of the citations or the stops, are they locals? Are they people coming in for the weekend and the weeknights?
It varies. I don't keep track. We don't track who's getting stopped. I mean, to go through that, it would take a while, but it varies. We see a lot of people, local residents. But again, we issue a lot of warnings. Some of it has to do with like minor vehicle issue, like a taillight out, which most people don't realize. So the officer, because we have to report it and record it for statistical purposes, they get a warning, "Hey, your taillight's out, maybe a broken lens on the vehicle," or "It's headlight out." So it's more of a warning courtesy type of thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, please? Well, Pat, I certainly agree with you, what you said about our citizens. That's been talked about considerably, that they're the ones who helped you put this case together.
Yes, sir.
And what I'd like to ask the Board of Alderman to do, we'd like to give our citizens just a hand clap because of what you do for us. So can we do that? Well done. Thank you. I'm always amazed at your slides and how easy they are to read. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I didn't know it's a lot.
Yeah, I asked you to approve them, so. We share the responsibility, Don.
He does write the right dates on his tickets, I can tell you. You don't want to test him on that.
Well, Shane, you're already on your way up here, Mr. Chief.
Did you get my log? Yeah, I did. It was a fire hydrant.
You got it ready? Mayor Alderman, I got the report for the Fire Department for the month of July. We had 14 EMS calls in the city. We had 25 EMS calls in the county. And we only had one fire call in the city, but the county made up for it. We had 22 fire calls in the county. And we had seven motor vehicle accidentity, and we had nine motor vehicle accidents in the county. That's my report for the month of July.
July? Did you say July?
I said July.
That's good. Any questions, Shane, please?
Thank you.
Shane, what's your next event?
Oh, we got our fish fry coming up, September. We'll discuss it Monday meeting. I think we have meeting August 5th and most of the day. That'll be our next event.
We'll look forward to that, and we'll eat fish and raise money at the same time.
Yes.
Good. Thanks, Shane. Chadley, what are you? There you are. Chadley, in our Tourism Director's Report.
Good evening. So I've got a selection of graphs to kind of help you understand a little bit about what goes on in my world. So the first one is Visitors to the Visitor Center. Just to give you, if it's hard to see, the horizontal axis is the time, and then the month, rather. And then the vertical axis is going to be the number of visitors, and broken out by month. The gray one is 2018. So we didn't start tracking it until March, or at least I don't have any data from March of 2018. So you see the general trend. And this by no means indicates the number of visitors that come to town. It's just the number of visitors that come into the visitor center. Visitor guides sent. We get requests every week for visitor guides, and then we... This is only individual guides. They're sent out to individuals around the country, really. And so you'll see the trends. Again, we only started sending them in June. And so you'll see the trends there. Visit celatexas.com, which is our destination website that we use for marketing purposes and for general destination things. The first month we had data on that was November. That's when we started it. And so you'll see the trends throughout. Again, if you have any questions about any of these graphs, feel free to ask. But social media, you'll see the general trend of our social media accounts, Facebook and Instagram. Instagram, I started it towards the beginning of 2000, or it's towards the middle of 2018. That graph is a little wrong, I think, but that's the right trend. And then this is a bit on digital marketing that we've been doing. This is a part of a campaign that's actually running right now, but it's a little sample. On the left there, you'll see one of the 35 ads that were designed as a part of the campaign. Different sizes, different images. Some of them are for prospecting, finding new people. Some of them are for retargeting people after they've already seen an ad or after they've visited our website. The click-through rate for this particular ad that you're looking at is 3.05%, which is six times, a little bit over six times the industry average, which we expect to be 0.47%. And the entire campaign itself is running twice the industry average, and that's for travel and hospitality. Half of those clicks that we've gotten out of this campaign have resulted in people exploring the site, and they were heavily engaged with the site. That's not people who just visited, but people who visited and stayed and explored and visited a lot of pages. And a lot of the higher engagement rates that you're seeing are because of retargeting. What we've learned through this is that once people see our ad and we send them another ad, or once they visit our website, and then we send them an ad, they're much more likely to engage with the ad and engage with the website. So, and then the last, one more thing, and then on the last page, sorry. Don, events. Yeah, and so this is an event calendar that's on our website. This is something actually that community members and business owners have been given access to submit events to. I've given them a link that they can go to to submit the events. I believe that's how all of these events were submitted. I can import them manually as well. But you'll see that one that you're seeing a lot of is a special exhibit that's going on at the museum right now, Cartoon in Texas. So, any questions?
I have a question for you. Back up.
Yeah.
Okay, right here, you're saying that, if I'm understanding this, that we're six times the national average of people going to a website?
Of the industry average.
Okay, so how does that equate to people actually coming here? I'm always looking for return on investment.
Totally, totally.
So do we have like a number that shows, okay, we're doing this much clicks versus this much increase in people coming?
Certainly, I will. And that will come as a result of something that we do with our... It's called Adara. It's company. And they offer visitor attribution. Basically, if people have seen our ad, did they end up in market? Where did they stay? Because Adara uses data from travel websites, from GDS, Global Distribution System, for travel bookings. And they use all that data, and they combine it, and we actually run these ads through Adara. And so when you run the ad through Adara, they can actually track who's seeing it. And then if they're looking at hotels online, if they're booking a flight online, and all of... And then if they're looking at hotels online, if they're booking a flight online and all of that information. So I will have that, I just don't have it yet because the campaign's not over.
It's a great tool.
Yeah.
Because it's budget time coming up and all those things are great to look at.
Yeah, certainly. And I'll have it before the next, before the next budget. And I'll have, yeah, and it's only for the digital. I believe, I believe next year, Adara added the social component. So you can actually do it with social media advertising as well, but for now, it's just for the, for the display ads, like you're seeing here.
Chadley, why don't you give some details on your wanted chocolate and arts? Do you want some more detail on art festival?
Yeah, so art fair is this weekend. They're having a soiree tomorrow night. A Chamber of Commerce is putting this on. Soiree tomorrow night out at Ten Rock Ranch, I believe they're selling tickets at the door if you don't already have one. And then, and then the festival runs from Saturday and Sunday all day. And they've got, I think, twice the amount of artists they had last year, which I think is great progress and everybody seems to be really engaged with it and happy about it. And then what used to be chocolate and wine weekend is changing a little bit, changing it to the Salado Culinary Festival. The main reason for that was a lack of, well, really just to broaden it and allow us to celebrate all the things that Salado offers from a culinary standpoint. We really didn't have an event that did that. And the way that people are traveling and, case in point, our highest, the ad that got the highest engagement was an ad that focused on food. And so trying to change this event into something that would be more appealing to people who, outside of just the people who like chocolate and wine. And so this year, the theme of it is going to be chocolate, so we're trying to keep with that theme. And then we'll try to continue growing it in the coming years. So that's on the third weekend of September.
Other questions, please?
You may want to mention what y'all are doing tomorrow night in conjunction with the art fair, which is pretty amazing as far as the recognition you're going to provide.
I'll let my brother turn the rock, Chan, what's going on?
We actually tried to do this a year ago. George Batwell has been, is an amazing artist in this state, has been recognized statewide and nationally, and he has been exhibiting at the art fair in Salado for more than 50 years. So we're going to recognize him tomorrow night with a proclamation and a key to the city. So we'd love for you to be out there and help us celebrate the time he has spent in Salado over the years and really has been a big supporter of this community. So hope to see y'all out there and hope you'll give him a pat on the back and a big thank you for his support of the art fair. It's going to be out at Ten Rock Ranch. I don't know which one of the pavilions, but I'm sure you can just follow the traffic. It'll get you to the right ones. 6:30, is that right?
Yeah, 6:30 to 9:00, I believe. It starts at 6:30.
I just go where my wife tells me to go, so it's.
And they'll have hors d'oeuvres and things like that, yeah, food.
What do you wear at the soiree?
Oh.
I do have a couple of questions, Chadley. How do you count visitors coming into the visitor center?
Really high-tech method. There's these things, you mark it four times and then you do a cross, across all four of them.
We have somebody sitting there doing that?
Well, it's just every time, whoever's working, we have basically a calendar. And I actually have it broken down by hour, just because I'm tedious like that sometimes and I was just curious if we could see trends, like if people.
That's called aggie algebra.
Yeah, right. And so, yeah, it's broken up by hour and then we just add it up and I tally it for the month, just to, and I just write it down and keep it handy. Yeah.
On the calendar that Betty had, that you keep going whizzing through there? Calendar?
It's there. Oh, it's not there. I'm staring at it.
It's a stealth calendar.
Comes up on my head.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing anything on some of our, our major businesses like the stagecoach, have any events that you look at putting on a calendar? Does a golf course have any golf tournaments that we can look at putting on the calendar? And of course Barrow's, you know, they're having events nearly weekly, so I'd like to see something like that put on there.
So to, to answer the question on Barrow, I just emailed our website people today to see if there's a way I could mass import it. They do have a lot of events and it takes a lot of time to manually import each one. And so I've asked, and so there is a way, I'm going to, I'm going to be able to mass import, Barrow sends out an email with all their events and I'm going to, I'm going to try to mass import through an Excel sheet, all of the events to the calendar. As far as the other businesses, I've mainly, for the most part, left it up to the individual businesses to submit their events. Now, there are cases where I make sure that, like, like, like the stagecoach does have, this is not, so when you go to the website and you click on events and you look, this is not the default view. The default view is a list view and so you see it day by day. It's harder to understand if you look at it like this, but if you look at like Fourth Friday, the stagecoach has happy hour all night on Fourth Friday. And so that's on there as a part of the raw and sip and shop festivities. So that is on there. The golf course, I, I mean, I, I can ask them if they have any events coming up. I guess they have some tournaments.
Yeah, I noticed that the golf courses have some like 27 hole tournaments, which has just pretty much sold out everything on the golf course.
Right.
And, you know, that would be of interest for other businesses in the town, so just get the word out on what's happening.
Well, and, and I've tried to encourage, I've tried to encourage people to use that tool for submitting events. Hasn't been a whole lot of response, to be completely honest with you. At the end of the day, you saw the number of people that are visiting the site because of the ads that we're throwing out and, and all the work that we're doing. And I've, I've tried to position it as a, as a tool for the community to put their events and be in front of all those people that we're advertising to. So I'll work closer with them and try to get more things up there.
Yeah, I think the goal is to make it as comprehensive as possible.
Totally.
Right. I just wanted to know what's going on in, in here and, you know, if I want to get dressed up to go to the soiree, what I wear and stuff like that.
Right.
That's humor again, Don. Come on, stay with me tonight.
Seriously, take a picture and I'll post that on our Facebook.
Michael, it's black tie. It's a black tie affair.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll see you tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Chadley, please? Chadley, I want to, may I add a part to your report?
Sure.
I've been concerned about Legends.
Okay.
It was written by, of course, Jackie Mills. Jackie Mills failed about three or four weeks ago and it was a very critical, hard fall. Saturday night, I went to see Legends. Donnie Williams is the person who is directing it. Jackie was there. Legends this year was the best that I have ever seen. The music is unbelievably professional. It will blow you away. The acting is superb and there's 114 people in Legends. I encourage you, this is the last Saturday night for Legends. Come. I introduce it and I usually ask, how many people are from out of town? Eighty percent of the people who attended the Legends was out of town this last weekend. I would really appreciate if you'd pass the word, because I'd like for the people of Salado to see it because it's absolutely fantastic. But I would also like to have the people of Salado there in support of Jackie. I'm not sure how much longer she's going to be able to continue this, but I will tell you, as far as I'm concerned, she's a superstar in what she does. So Chadley, thank you for letting me have my, your report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Big town flavor, small town charm. That's pretty cool. Thank you. Okay, that ends our reports and we're going into the business. Discussion and possible action. A, discuss and consider possible action approving plans for the Salado Adventure Race on Sunday, October 13th, 2019. Don?
Yes, sir. Mayor members of the board, this is a first-time event and I think it's an exciting event that's fixing to happen. It's called the Salado Adventure, it will take place on Sunday, October 13th. It will take place on a Sunday. That's October 13th. It's a three-stage event that'll begin at Barrow's at 7:00 AM. And the first stage, I believe, has somewhere in the neighborhood of about an 11.35 mile run that will take participants out of Royal Street to Armstrong Road. Also, stage two involves 31.5 miles worth of a bike ride that'll begin at Campbell Hill Road and end on Stenit Mill Road. In stage three, it's a 3.6 mile run plus. I think that's the surprise, that maybe we can ask the organizer what will happen in stage three, but they will take it basically all the way from Stenit Mill through Mill Creek to face park where the event tends to an end, around 2:00 in the afternoon unless Alderman, Cogan and I are in it. And then they'll probably end about 7:00 on Monday morning. Especially if we're dressed for the soiree. The police department will be providing traffic control for the event. Then organizers have secured insurance for the event. I will tell you, this is, we have a lot of events that come through our front doors, but this is probably one of the hardest planned events that we've dealt with. You have someone who's a ball of energy, who's been in charge of this planning process. She's here tonight, if you'd like to ask her some questions, but she's done a lot of work on this particular event and her team has, and it should be quite an activity. So if you want to step up and maybe offer a few comments, in particular about stage three.
Are you going to have electric vipers to share?
Hi, my name is Josie Edwards and I am a, I grew up here since I was eight months old and so I consider myself a native. I went to school with Clifford Coleman. I've been running these roads since I was old enough to run and I always dreamt of sharing them with, you know, maybe city folk that don't get to enjoy these beautiful rural roads that we have. So I guess, what questions do you have for us? And this is Katie, I'll let her say.
Hi, I'm Katie from Barrow. We're the starting launching point for this adventure race and I want to let you know that this has an overnight component to it. The racers are encouraged to camp out on some private property owned just outside of town or stay in one of the lodging options in town. So there is an overnight component to this environmental tourism event. I think she is so brilliant to incorporate this overnight stay. She's marketing this event to people who are stuck in cubicles all day and they don't get to enjoy a beautiful little town like Salado. So the third portion of the race is the one that is the most exciting and different. Josie is a seasoned race director. She knows what she's doing and when she told me about this, I, okay, here we go. But I mean, she's really, she's brilliant. So the third component is going to include the racers making their way through the creek down, or actually upstream from the Stenit Mill property where they unload their bicycles and they're going to go upstream to, I think, the first low water crossing and then get back on the streets and make their way back to Royal Street and the finish line at the brewery. So that's where this becomes kind of an amphibian race. The people are, I've never seen a race do this and I think it's really going to set Salado apart and, yeah.
Okay, so I have a little integrity problem right now. So I told Don, so we've been through different scenarios of this race and so, and it's still like, so, but we want, like, we want to involve the creek. I mean, that's got to be a yes, because that's the most beautiful part of, of our town. So I had my doubts, but I walked it on Sunday and it was such a not a big deal. It was so drama-free and the people have already run 11 miles and biked 35, so they're not going to be like a horde of people. It's going to be one by one strung out by this point. So I think we'll just pretty much go unnoticed. And so we've, we've put that as an option that we want a yes on.
Meaning go to the creek?
Yes. It's, you know, and so there's a lot of ifs about this because like, you know, we've had floods on that weekend in Salado. So depending on the flood situation, depending on the water level, depending on the weather, we, we want that option on the table.
Mayor, I guess my only, my only question on that, on that piece of it would be property on either side and making sure that if they stay, I don't know how deep the water is at the point that they're going to be walking and those type of things, then you've got to bet insurance. But I guess the concern would be making sure you guys try not to trespass onto other people's property. That would probably be the biggest concern.
I, yes, I, I just want to say that I really get it with the private property and those people have worked their whole lives to afford that property and it's a really big deal. And I really get it that that's sacred. And I don't want to step on any toes. If, I don't want anybody to be angry. My racers will be instructed to leave no trace, to stay right down the middle of the creek and to go at a slow and safe pace. I, my insurance company, I told them that I was going to have, have racers walk up one to two feet of creek depth, which isn't, it wasn't dangerous on Sunday. It was totally chill. If the water levels stay inviting, I'd like to include that.
The one thing, the one thing I might suggest, if you want to approve that piece, and I know it's a step, and we can help you getting property owners to notify, but I think it probably would be a good idea to notify the property owners on that leg of the creek, so they're at least aware and they don't get surprised on Sunday afternoon.
Yes, yes, sir. I, I, I'm aware that they like to suddenly have target practice when, when they're not expecting company. Like, I've been going up and down that creek my whole life, so I understand all the ins and outs. And I did send out one letter and I'll send out a second one. And so nobody, the way, so nobody got back with me on that portion of the creek. So, yeah, thank you.
Sure.
I have a question. It says here, event organizers have secured insurance for the event. Could you go into a little bit of detail on that and is the village liable in the event that somebody gets severely injured or, and also are there going to be emergency services support available during the events?
Okay, good question. First, I've enlisted the help of Tricia Rich to be our emergency contingency planner and she'll be the go-between and she'll have the overall plan on how to respond to emergencies. She's an MD at Scott and White and an avid runner in town too. And so, and she'll be in charge of making a contingency plan and in any kind of situation, how we would respond. And so I've put the village of Salado on the insurance plan. So if there are any claims, they will not, their, their legal fees will be covered.
We basically are an additional insurer, John, which means, which our insurance company requires, if we approve any event, we need to be an additional insurer. That way we're not number one in the event something goes wrong. It's the policy number one. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, please? Josie, it's good to see you involved in the village again.
Thank you.
You are really a spark to it. And all you have to do is, you taught tech stock a lesson back then and you're still talking, don't you?
Really?
But you are very good at what you do.
Oh, well, I would like to defer that compliment and say Katie's actually the one doing all the work. And, you know, I mean, it takes me an hour to make a post, a post on Facebook and she made like 12 posts in like under 12 minutes. I mean, she's like amazing. So she's really the wing beneath, the wind beneath my wings.
Can I say, since Facebook was brought up, I highly recommend that the city get a Facebook page because your interactions and your reach will be a thousand times further than on Twitter here in the village.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chadley, Chadley.
First one would be the picture of the soiree.
Yeah, I also just want to acknowledge every, you know, I want to acknowledge the board and the mayor because I know you guys work so hard for no pay and it's huge what you guys do for my village and I love you guys and my village. And I, hi, Sands. I used to babysit for their boys, sorry. And I just want good things for this village. My family. My family's well-being is still wrapped up in this village, and I need this village to be successful. So I'm here, I'm, I'm at, I'm at the service of Salado, and I also want to say that this is, this is a community project from a, this came out of a class I'm taking in Austin. And so if anybody's curious about the class, you can talk to me afterwards. And I'd also like to just enroll the people of Salado in the possibility of coming out and cheering for the racers on October the 13th. We can use cheerleaders, we can use volunteers, we can use participants. We have a website up. It's on runsignup.com, and if you want the address, just talk to me after the meeting, and we'd love to have you participate. We need tons of volunteers to keep everyone safe, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Josie. Thanks, Katie. I'll entertain the motion, please.
Motion to approve is written.
It's made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded at discussion.
It needs to be kind of put in there somewhere of exactly what we're approving and seconding, because we can't exactly approve, you know, use of public property and things like that. We're...
You mean private property.
I meant private property, yes. Only, only the parts within the village's control.
I think that's true. I think that is true, and that is you're approving, and you're also putting in there contingent that they notify the private property owners on that property that they planned to cross.
And any regulatory issues that come out of using the creek.
Absolutely.
That kind of indemnifies us from saying yes to something that we don't really have control over.
That's smart.
Don, we don't really even have the route that we're taking in the creek, and there's a lot of variables floating around out there in the creek.
Yeah, all you're, all you're approving is the public route. The public pieces of the route, the roadways in the city that they're going to be on. The private property is going to be between her and them as far as dealing with them. So you're not approving the private property. What you're doing is you're saying, you're proving that the plans, with the understanding that they're going to contact and seek permission from those property owners on the creek where they're going to be running.
So we can expect a second? This will come back around again? This is it?
You're, you're basically setting the frame that you're not approving their private property access.
John, do you agree to add to your motion?
Yes.
And if she, for some reason, does not get permission from those property owners to do that, she can write them on the public route that she approved.
Okay.
I have a, I have a second to the, to the motion and discussion now.
Question?
Question has been called. You're in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed likewise. Passes. Discuss and consider possible actions regarding the possible development of additional regulations to address potential safety issues relating to the operation of golf carts on public streets within the village of Salado. John?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, let me be perfectly clear with everybody. I don't want to turn into public enemy, number one. I'm not going to shut down the use of golf carts. That's not my intent. My intent is to bring logical discussions and talk about how golf, golf courses are operated within the village of Salado. I think it's a very important issue. But before I start, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Ferguson, who has some additional information he would like to portray.
Thanks, Sean. I want to kind of set the stage with a bit of history and staff's position on this particular issue, because I think as we dug into this issue much deeper than we probably have in years, I think it's important that we understand what really we have authorized up to this date in the village. I think there's a misunderstanding. I don't think, I think there's been a lot of things that have been done that probably, you know, were not necessarily authorized by our ordinance or by state law. And that said, I think it's important that we set the record straight. Back in 14, 2014, that is, we adopted an ordinance that basically allowed for golf carts to operate during the daylight hours on village streets where the posted speed limit was under 35 miles an hour. If you read the ordinance that we adopted, it is a very generic ordinance that has two provisions in there relating to the operation. It says, "You're going to operate under the provision set forth in this ordinance," which it did not set forth any provisions. And then it also said, "You will operate within the provision set forth in state law in relation to golf carts." And at the time that ordinance was approved, the state law, the bare minimum state law standards is what you adopted, basically said that you're allowed to function on a public highway or public street, provided the speed limit's less than 35 miles an hour and during daytime hours. There's some specific regulations relating to master plane communities, platted lots and those type of things, but long and short, we adopted the bare minimums in 14. In 17, there was an attempt to try to amend that ordinance, and it did not go anywhere. It got rather contentious in discussion, as the focus was talking about the age of drivers, and there was some discussion even about seat belts and those type of things. Nothing happened, so that 14 ordinance stays into effect. The 14 ordinance that really technically limits us to daytime operation. You have the ability, under state law, to increase the state regulations, okay? And that is, that is, I assume what we're here tonight to talk about, as far as adding additional regulations. First of all, you need to true up what we're doing right now, and we have golf carts driving all over this town tonight. You know, we have golf carts driving all over this town without certain types of equipment that if we choose to adopt additional regulations, we're obligated to require. What I'm talking about is this, if you so choose to move forward tonight, direct us to develop an ordinance to bring to a workshop and eventual discussion and consideration. That ordinance is going to require and must require that any golf cart operating on city streets is going to have to have headlamps, taillamps, reflectors, parking brake, and mirrors. There is no grandfather provision in the state law, which means if you have a golf cart that doesn't have one of those things, any modification at this stage of the game is going to require those particular pieces of equipment to be on there, okay? You have the ability to, you really have a broad range of abilities and additional requirements you can place. You can establish a permit for everyone. You can require insurance, liability insurance. You can establish an age limit or a condition on who can actually drive it. You can establish parameters relating to the conduct of those people riding in that car. It is a given, and it is spelled out very clearly in state law, and that is, if it's operated on a public street, it must adhere, much like a bicycle, you know, it must adhere to the rules of the road, meaning you stop at stop signs, you yield, yield signs, you signal when you turn, those type of things. So that, that's not an additional requirement you would need to put in there. That's, that's set forth in the traffic code right now as it is. If you want to reiterate it, you have every ability to reiterate that from that standpoint. So to keep that in mind as you look at that, this discussion tonight moving forward, number one. Number two, another thing you need to keep in mind is, there are two other issues that I think we had bad information on from a prior chief, and I wanted to set the record straight. Number one, you do have the ability, while you're limited in traveling only on roads that are less than 35 miles an hour, you have the ability to go through an intersection with the road that has a speed limit greater than 35 miles an hour. So translation, you have the ability, basically, to go across the interstate to Johnny's from this side of town with your golf cart. Before, the position of the PD was you couldn't do that. You can. State law allows that. In not just completed legislative session, but the prior, they made a modification that allows counties to authorize the operation of golf carts on roadways less than 35 miles an hour. That did not exist before. That now does exist. There was a question about West Village Road, and the county was saying, "We can't do that." So West Village Road is speed limited and posted in such a fashion that you could potentially allow golf cart traffic on that if the county authorized that. So the question was, back then, in 17, how do we get to Fairway from here? You know, and is it possible to even get there driving through? Well, you're going to go across some private property to get there if you're able to cross the interstate. But the reality of it is, you have the ability to cross the interstate, and depending on what happens with West Village Road, you have the ability to go through that intersection of West Village and then travel into West Village to get to where you need to get. So from a staff perspective, we were asked by the alderman what our position was on it, and quite frankly, we're not going to get involved in the political discussion. That's not our job. But, but our position from a staff standpoint is, we've identified a couple of issues that are serious issues that we feel you need to address if you're going to go into looking at this particular ordinance. And the issue number one is, the problem we see on daily basis of people riding in other people's laps, whether that be mom carrying the baby, the dad carrying the baby, whether that be the two teenagers sitting in each other's laps and riding down the road. The typical golf cart weighs about 500 pounds. The typical F-150 pickup truck weighs about 6,000 pounds, if not more. And the two don't meet with, with everybody winning. And the problem you run into is, if you have somebody sitting in somebody's lap, that individual becomes a projectile who's in the lap, be it a baby, be it a teenager, be it an adult. So our feeling is that you ought to entertain, if you're going to look at this, some type of provision that prohibits lap riding, and that's whether you're behind the wheel or whether you're sitting in the rear bunker seats, okay? That's number one from, from that end. We think there's value in requiring liability insurance. We've not had any accidents to speak of in the village. We've had some on the golf course, but I can tell you, we've not had any in recent history where we've had collisions on the roadway, but you will. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And I think if it's going to be on the road, it's got four wheels, it can go 25 miles an hour, it only makes sense that you require some type of liability insurance, especially as it's carrying people. The other thing is the permitting night traffic. It's happening right now, it's happened for years in this community. So I mean, I think you, if you want to allow that, you need to formally permit that in the ordinance. We don't have any issue with that, provided we have lights, provided we have turn signals and those type of things that they're used in functioning. So the issue, the issue on drivers, I'm just going to tell you right now, I'll reiterate what we reiterate, reiterate back in 17 on that particular issue, and that is this. Our police department cannot sit on a street corner and stop golf cart drivers because you look too young. That's profiling. And at the end of the day, if we stop somebody for a violation and they're underage, if you set an age limit, then we can deal with that particular issue. But please understand, we don't have the capability, from a legal standpoint, to literally sit on the corner and start picking people off because of how they look. I mean, I don't look as old as I am, I don't think. My wife says differently, but, but I will tell you that most of us probably don't look our age, and you're going to pick on the wrong person, and the wrong person's going to call you on profiling, and it's going to be very hard to say, "Well, I, I wasn't out there stopping you because you look too young." So the other thing to keep in mind about the age issue is, we're talking, we're talking folks a lot about young people, you know, driving the golf carts. And yes, I've seen it myself, and there are young people driving golf carts on this town, on the streets. If you place an age limit, in particular if you say licensed drivers have to be the operators, keep in mind there are some elderly people in this community that don't have driver's licenses anymore that drive golf carts. And, and there's a reason they don't have a driver's license. And so you got to keep in mind, there's, there's kind of a catch 22 on that, on that age issue related to the operation. But those would be our thoughts initially, John.
Okay, thank you. All right, to start with, I'm going to go through some comments I've heard from people. Or does anybody want to get up and talk about this before we start?
Hold on, hold on. This is my phone.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We have two people that have filled out the forms to speak. I remind these two people that first, your comments are to us. Secondly, you have three minutes. Thirdly, give your name and your address. Our first person is Larry Nathanson. Larry?
My name is Larry Nathanson. My address is 3901 Chisholm Trail, Salado. John, thank you for bringing this to everybody's attention. Don, thank you very much for your additions to it. I have one issue, and that is about age. And you're right, how do you identify a 14-year-old or a 13-year-old or identify somebody that's 10-years-old legally? Obviously, it can't be done. However, by raising the age limit to 16 and requiring a valid driver's license, you then have the opportunity to identify the person legally. I will share with you, many of you have said, "Well, gee, we haven't had anything yet." How many of you have fire insurance, and why do you have fire insurance? Have you had a fire? We haven't had a fire, but I have fire insurance. It is the same identical issue as saying, "We've never had anything happen." It doesn't mean it can't happen tomorrow. Thank you.
The second person to speak is Gail Blansett. Gail, you're going to have to speak in that microphone.
It is very special to live in a village where golf carts are such a part of our lifestyle. Golf cart issues have been presented to the boa in the past with much controversy and overwhelming resistance. I don't have the answers, but I would like to make a point on some wrenching observations and suggestion possibilities to be considered when making decisions for all of us. I recently observed increased very large truck and automobile traffic, increased automobile speeding, more and more golf carts on the road, especially in the summer and evenings with drivers of all ages. I was horrified to see two very young children fighting on the backseat of a golf cart while mom was chatting on her cellphone and speeding obliviously down the street. A few days earlier, I saw a very young boy, about four-years-old, standing on the backseat and chiming on the roof of the golf cart while his mom sped down the street and turned the corner practically on two wheels. We have all seen very young drivers with young passengers and no adults. I do not want to see unnecessary rules put in place, but the lines must be drawn clearly for us all in order to keep everyone as safe as possible. Please think outside of the box in a way that will leave as much freedom of choice to everyone, yet keep us all safe from each other. I love my golf cart, and I enjoy the privilege of riding around with my husband and grandchildren. It is a whole different experience than riding in an automobile, and it is a part of the specialness of the village. A few thoughts to consider. Lower and post-citywide speed limit for automobiles to 25 miles per hour. Our streets are so meandering and narrow that it is not safe to go any faster anyway. Perhaps it would lessen the severity or give enough time to avoid a collision. Consider a compromise of conditions for young drivers or areas where child drivers are allowed to or not allowed to drive. Consider special classes or certifications and stipulations. Just think outside the box. Come up with something that, that can be worked and make everyone happy if you can. Keep in mind, we can't be in conflict with higher laws that already limit what we can do, but it could be negligent to do nothing to keep our village as fun and safe as possible for everyone in our golf cart special world. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. That was some great comments.
I've got to say, I'm, this is my opinion, I'm not talking for anyone else. This is, this is my words. You decided in the beginning.
Okay, well, thank you. As Mr. Ferguson stated, 2014 January 23rd... As Mr. Ferguson stated, 2014, January 23rd, the ordinance was created to operate golf carts in Salado. And part of the, the ordinance I read through the other day, it says, the reason it did it was to support the quality of life, okay? In my view, the quality of life, and these are comments coming from people and things I've seen on the golf course, and they're driving the streets, it says, quality of life is not defined by young children driving golf carts without adult supervision. Adults driving golf carts exceed us while holding infants in their lapses in their arms or talking and texting on the cellphone at the same time as the lady just mentioned. Young children holding infants in the arms while adults are driving. Golf carts being operated in overcrowded conditions. Young children operating golf carts and not understanding the rules of the road. Young children and adults operating golf course not understanding how seemingly normal turn with an off camber position can rule a golf cart. I've seen golf carts up on two wheels, turning on the Indian Trail of Old Mill Grove. Young children and adults driving golf carts and not yielding the right of way. And the worst thing I've seen is adults operating golf carts impaired or distracted. Okay? The village ordinance has a disclaimer, as was mentioned, we can change the rules to make Salado a safer place, and I think we have that inherent responsibility as an alderman. So I would like to put forth these considerations. Only licensed drivers can operate a golf course within the village limits. But, we can maybe talk about a younger person, maybe at the age of 14, that is not a licensed driver, to attend an operator safety course presented by the Salado Police Department as an alternative, just for consideration. Each person in the golf course must have their own seat and be seat belted, if the seat belts are built in the vehicle by design. All golf courses must adhere to the posted speed limits. I've seen the golf carts come down the hill by the low water bridge, pushing 35 miles an hour and shoot straight across the bridge with no concern about upcoming traffic whatsoever. All golf courses must have, we must have fully operational lights, horns, brakes, turn signals, reflectors, and anything required to be on a public street, just like an automobile. All golf courses must have liability insurance to operate within the village limits. All golf courses must operate in a manner that does not endanger the occupants or perceive a threat to oncoming, oncoming traffic that they share the road with. Then all golf courses must be agreeable to be stopped by the Salado Police and, and to have a, a courtesy inspection applied to make sure everything is adhered to properly. Not targeting people, but just a courtesy inspection like they do automobiles from time to time. And all golf courses that reside outside the village limits must adhere to our rules before they come inside the village limits. And as, as Mr. Ferguson said, a pickup truck weighing 5,000 pounds meet a golf cart head on, you know what the alternative's going to be. And that's all I have, thank you.
Any questions, please, to either Don or John?
Do we have a copy of the, any ordinance that's used by any golf cart communities?
We, we looked at Port Aransas, we looked at Aransas Pass. They, they permit, one of, one actually issues a light, yeah, one actually issues a license.
Yeah, Port A has licenses.
And so, you go through the process. The benefit of the permitting and licensing process, as we talked Amber back in 17, is at least it gives you the ability to bring them in and explain to them the rules that they have to adhere to. I'm not advocating the permit, I'm just saying that, that somehow you've got to have the ability to communicate with them. And I think it's a good way to get people in, even if it's a no feet permit, and they have to have a sticker or something along those lines, you at least have the ability to bring them in. I was going to add in, the ordinance we have right now talks about utility vehicles, and it's in, it's in contrast to, to some of the current state laws, too. And, and a lot of cities have moved in the direction, in addition to dealing with golf carts, they've dealt with what are called electric vehicles or neighborhood electric vehicles, NEDs, and those type of things. And if you choose to give us direction, or go ahead and modify the ordinance to get it comprehensive and make it, make it true to what you want, we'd ask that you give us the ability to also go in and update that. This would deal with the ATVs on the roads that can get calls on periodically and things like that, and clarify that, so people understand what the rules are.
Because that's what we are, as a golf cart community. And so, we need to model another golf cart community that's successful in that.
Don, have any, other questions, please?
Don, have any changes to your world, to the transportation code?
No, '04, no, no. It not, not was used when this was done. '04, this was adopted when '04 was done, but it didn't go in full, full force. It mentions '04, but the problem is it doesn't spell out specifically in the ordinance itself the requirements about the equipment changes, nighttime operation, those type of things, all those things that we've allowed. The most recent change, as I mentioned earlier, when '05 went into effect, in '05 relating to, you know, the certain, crossing certain roadways at 35 miles an hour. And then, of course, there's the county provision that I mentioned is also ahead.
Other questions, please?
Don, we also visited, revisited this in 2018, whenever I first came on. I think it was like the night that I came on and Amber actually stepped down. And, you know, again, we talked, and we talked, and nothing ever really happened. And, you know, it's, you know, I've been telling people that, you know, the way that this Salado, that we raised our kids, is that they were driving it, learned how, basically, how to drive in the community. And it was a parental responsibility that I wouldn't let my kids drive unless, you know, I was absolutely certain that they knew what they were doing. And I was, you know, going to bear all the brunt of that if that happened, you know, all the insurance and liability and the whole bit. So, you know, we keep dragging this up, and we want to impose more regulations, and yet, nobody has ever said, or shown, or provided any kind of incident that actually happened out there that will require us to have another ordinance on, that we're going to place restrictions on people out in our community and start stopping people and giving tickets and asking for a license and the whole bit. So I'm not on board with it, so I think we're wasting our time here, and that's my, my say on this.
Whose child are we willing to just die before we actually do something? That's my question. I mean, you want one of your kids to die, or one of mine?
When are we, when did we start taking away the parenting rights of, of people? Why do we have to go and parent people's kids out there now?
Because there's bad parents.
So it's not our responsibility to be their parents. We're up here to run the city.
We have the inherent responsibility to make it safer for the community.
I don't have a motion on the floor, and we can't get into this discussion. It's question time. Now, I will entertain a motion, please.
I move we take no motion and direct the administrator to take no motion at this time and put this to rest.
Yes, sir, second. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion now.
Understand that the way this current ordinance is written...
I currently, I fully understand how the ordinance is being written.
Daytime only. So, just, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm there. Just know that that's what the current ordinance says you've adopted, the minimums.
Other discussion?
Do we hear anybody wants to add an amendment to allow driving at night?
Is that a ticketable offense?
No. If you allow the nighttime driving, you're going to need to go in and acquire the equipment, which I think there are probably several carts in town that do not have that equipment, which means they get retrofitted or they're not on the street. Amber asked a question, let me, let me toss this in my opinion, and just from a standpoint, you said we're a golf cart community. And, and this ordinance declares the fact you're doing it for that purpose, to make that claim, and for economic development. My point from a staff standpoint would be this. I'm six and one, half dozen others, as far as, we're going to follow your direction. But my, my, my comment would be this, and that is if you're a golf cart community, it's important that we start acting like a golf cart community. And that we take the standards necessary, if we're going to promote it and allow it, that we take the standards necessary to do that. Not disagreeing, I'm just saying, if we're going to do it, we need to do it right.
Okay, the motion's out there.
Motion is out there and discussion?
Question?
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, likewise. Motion fails. I'll entertain another motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we direct city staff to bring the current practice of how we conduct ourselves as a golf cart community currently, to bring that up to the standard where we can have nighttime operation, and that we bring the minimum standard of the golf carts up to nighttime operation, and present that at a workshop on the 15th.
Yes, sir, second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Now, discussion.
Well, is that the only thing that you're asking them to do? So everything else off the table? So just bring it up to the minimum standard?
At this time, yes. And again, that's to a workshop, so that doesn't mean we can't add things at the workshop. But minimally, I think that's where I'd like to go, to get us to where we are operating at least legally, in our practice.
So during the workshop, we can also discuss other issues, but this will get us to the point of discussing that we have to get better.
That's why I want to put it in a workshop, yes.
If you wanted to add no lap riding and stuff like that, that would come up in a workshop discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion, please?
I'll, I'll just say that I like the nighttime riding provision. I like the no lap. There, there are some parts of this, Amber, you've discussed that I like. John, I'll tell you that the seatbelt thing is, as, as far as an adult and a golf cart, I'm like, I, I can't get into that. But in the workshop, I'm very willing to listen to that discussion. I mean, but, I mean, the golf cart thing is a contentious thing because it's contentious. I mean, we've been down the road a lot of times, and I like Frank's approach that we're going to start here and, and we build some of this fault incrementally in. I have insurance on my golf cart. I have all the equipment to drive it at night. But technically, I can't drive it at night right now.
That's right.
But I do. So, chief, wherever you are, I'm, I'm going to be out there, and you got your opportunity. So, I, I, just as a discussion point, John, I, I like where we're going, it's just, I think we have to hit your bell to get there.
Is there any way we can workshop this another day besides the 15th? Just like, literally, the only day I'm going to be here.
And I agree with Amber, she's not going to be here, and I'd like to...
Let's put it on the, let's put it on the September 5th meeting, and we'll just make a special workshop on it.
I accept the amendment.
Any other discussion? So I hear the call of the question. Question? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise. Passed this. Folks, this is a great board. The decisions that are made one way or the other, the discussion, this is the way you want a city doing. I'm very pleased with all the things that I heard, that we were able to talk about that immediately. So thank you very much. Now, C. Discuss and consider possible action regarding the possible development of regulations of the parking of trailers, development of recreational vehicles, and boats on public and private property within the village of Salado, Texas. John?
Hello again. I'm, I'm bringing this up tonight because these are comments I've received strictly from people, not my personal opinion. Okay, there are a lot of concerns about RVs, boat trailers, unregistered vehicles in the state of disrepair, parked all over the city of Sal, within the villages of Salado. So it's time this, this, this needs to get, to be addressed. And this started coming up a while ago, so for the past 30 days, I've been walking around, driving, looking at Salado, taking pictures for, to Mr. Ferguson. And what I'm starting to find is there's a lot of RVs, RVs that are parked in the residential areas that people don't like to see it sticking above the fence in their backyard, their privacy fences. Some RVs stick up 10, 12 feet above the fences. A lot of the village covenants prohibit fences taller than six to eight feet, so the RV cannot be hidden from view from anybody. The problem is the RVs are seen from the street and adjoining neighbors. Okay? One comment received by one owner in the Mill Creek area, there was a man standing on top of his RV staring down at the family while they were having fun pool time. He would not take his eyes off the children. She got very worried about that, told me about it, she wanted me to bring it to board, that's why I'm bringing up this one topic. RVs have been seen at extended periods of times with people living in RVs making a single-family residence into a multi-family residence. RVs are being used as a temporary residence while permanent residences are being renovated. Automobile wreckers have been seen around the Mill Creek area with a different car on the hook every night, parked overnight in driveways. For the past three years, unregistered vehicles have been seen in residences in states of different repair, sometimes tarped, some on, sometimes not tarped. Boat trailers parked in residential driveways for extended periods of time. Work trailers parked in residences, residential areas for extended periods of time. Undeveloped lots with in Salado becoming storage areas for building materials. I think what this board needs to do is set strict guidelines to prevent stuff like this from happening. Some things I'm proposing that we could probably do. RVs must be parked in a manner as not seen from the street or any adjoining residence at any time. The village may allow the usage of RVs, of RVs, but on a restricted and limited capacity basis, and permits must be controlled by, by the city to prevent passes being reissued or renewed to allow the RV parked for an extended period of time or an indefinite period of time. Unregistered automobiles must be garaged or parked towards not seen from the road or, or resident, or adjacent residences. At no time will allow, allow wreckers to be in the city unless performing the tasks they're designed to do. Boats and boat trailers must be parked or garaged as not seen from the road or residential neighbors. Work businesses or trailers must be parked or garage as not seen from the road or adjoining neighbors. Undeveloped lots must not become storage, storage areas for building materials, etc., as we're starting to see pop up in Salado. I think this, this board has a responsibility to the city to keep it as attractive and pretty as possible, and that's my take on the, on the subject.
Questions, please? To John?
John, are you willing to workshop this item? Are you willing to take this to workshops?
Yes, absolutely, I just want to start the process.
And the other, any other questions to John?
Is John the only one we can ask questions? Or is John the only one we can ask questions to?
Yes, it's his. You can ask him, John, do your question.
So, John, how does this fit into deed covenants and that, those kind of things across, I mean, what, what are the, what are the parameters we're expected to fork under, and what are the homeowner associations and the deed covenants within those groups, the funding?
Right. As, as a municipality, this city, much like most cities in the state, have chosen not to engage in enforcement of deed restrictions, and quite frankly, not to recognize the deed restrictions. The deed restrictions are typically something that's left to the HOA, individual property owners to take, to take action with the other individual property owner in a private arena. We are responsible for public health, safety, and welfare, and you have the ability to adopt regulations that are more strict than a deed restriction or less strict than a deed restriction. And we will only be responsible for enforcing our regulation. So you can actually have a provision that is less restrictive than a covenant, and the person would be perfectly legal from our perspective. And if somebody wanted to challenge them in violation of the deed restriction, it would be between the HOA or an individual property owner taken care of. So you, you really don't get in the middle of that mix. The reason cities don't get in the middle of the deed restriction game is because this is a classic example. You have four, maybe five different HOAs in this particular area, and sets of deed restrictions that are out there, and probably none of them are the same. And the deed restrictions are typically civil vows. You have the abilities, the city, if you want, if you want to prohibit the disability of any trailers or RVs from the street, how that person disguises those is up to them. You have the ability to, to deal with that from, from that perspective. You know, the, the city, the staff has been directed by the board to handle its code enforcement on a complaint basis, as opposed to going out and trolling the streets looking for these things. So if we get complaints, we move on those complaints and, and go through the process of dealing with those. I don't know if that answers your question.
So part of, part of what I hear John's concern, and I'll just take one piece of it, is let's take a a house that has a car that's been on blocks for a week, is that a code enforcement violation? I mean, where does it, at what point does it become, hey, my car's broken, I need to fix it? And it becomes a. I was talking about unregistered automobiles, okay? Not a car that's broke down that's licensed, I get it.
And that's a key component of the junk vehicle ordinance is its registration. And that's, that's a key action point for us when it comes to dealing with the junk vehicle. Especially the state of disrepair, not functioning, and typically you wait until the registration is fired, and those are the actions. There's a formal process you have to follow. You go through a deal with junk vehicles, you just can't knock on the door and tell them I'm gonna hook it in. You go through a notice process and then you go through a resolution process with them. We have the ability to do that, yes. But again, we operate on complaints.
Do we currently have any rule?
Having somebody park, excuse me, Amber, having somebody park with a vehicle hooked to a wrecker in their driveway is not against the law. Now, if they're running a wrecker business out of their house and they're delivering vehicles to their house at night and dropping the vehicles in their driveway, that's a different ballgame. That's a totally different ballgame, that's a commercial business in a residential neighborhood. And we have the ability to hit on that. But just because they may periodically show up for a vehicle owner, you know, if they're spending the night there moving on to their next trip, I don't know. Sorry, Amber.
No, you're fine. So I had a question about public versus private property, because you kind of talked about both of them. There's a difference in, I'm not saying it's a good difference, but there is a difference in someone parking a boat or an RV on their private property. And those people who choose to park vehicles, any vehicle, boat, whatever, on the road for an extended amount of time. So do we have anything in any of our ordinances that prohibit street parking?
We, we fall back on the provisions that relate to the state law to say that you cannot block any type of roadway for the vehicle from that, from that code here. So if there's an RV that's parked in such a fashion that is restricting pass-through traffic on that road, which means you need to be able to get an ambulance or a fire truck through. One lane typically is what you're obligated to keep open. And yes, we have the ability to go move that. If it's blocking, if we determine there's a sight distance issue where it's blocking somebody's visibility of the traffic that's on coming at an intersection, we have the ability to deal with that, and that's typically under state law, under state law, state laws.
Other questions to either Don or John?
John, all this sounds familiar also. You know, last year, didn't the board tackle this same issue and issue a ordinance? And then it was such a big complaint point or pinch point in the community that they rescinded it?
Yes, sir. We went through extensive discussion on this. I went through the process of looking at different resolutions for it and believe the final, the final conclusion point of the ordinance was to set up a conditional use permit cut for people who wanted to park on their properties. And it would give you the opportunity to notify the neighbors and give them a bullet permit and give the board the ability to place certain conditions based on the situation at hand. And yes, that ordinance was eventually rescinded. The board took action to pull it because it was rather controversial.
So we're trying to, you know, Rodney had some very good questions, John had some very good points. And, you know, putting all that into a code is, is pretty much a bridge too far to cover every piece of property that we have within our, within our village. Because we're not talking just Mill Creek, we're talking about all the other properties that are adjacent to it and on the west side of the village.
You're talking things, you're talking, you're talking a lot of the entire city.
And then we also visited about, I heard Frank had a really good idea about like trying to zone it to where we had, you know, this applied to certain zones and this applied to other zones. And that was proven to be a little bit too much of a bridge to cross at that time, too. So I'm just, just bringing all this up because we have visited about this. And it's a very difficult subject to approach and a very difficult subject to nail down into a code or an ordinance. That was my question.
Yeah. Are there other questions?
You know, it may be difficult, okay? But, but just because it's difficult doesn't mean we can't come up with some kind of solution. We can't just bury our head in the sand because people have concerns and we think it's too difficult. And I think we need to figure it out and fix it and not just say it's too hard to do. I don't, I don't buy that.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, please.
All right, I like to entertain the motion, push to workshop for further discussion as recommended by Oliver Coachman.
Yes, sir, a second. There is a second now, discussion. If there is no discussion, do I hear the call for the question?
Question.
All in favor of this motion to workshop this particular piece of business? If you would raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise. Pass it. John, are we gonna, we're gonna workshop this on the first September?
I will probably put that on your regular workshop agenda. We're not supposed to be trying to focus, remember that second meeting in the month is typically your workshop.
Will you do this on the fifteenth or September second meeting?
We'll do the second meeting, the second meeting on September.
Okay. Number D. Discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposal to increase the amount of the wastewater impact fee per living unit, equivalent LUE, effective October the second, two thousand and nineteen. John?
Okay. We discussed this in a previous board meeting that we have the legal, let's back up a little bit. When we first started tackling the LUEs, we had formed a community with Denver Mills and a few other of our constituents that came in and visited with our lawyers. And they found that they had a legal range from zero to fifty-one, fifty-two that they could recommend. And as a a consideration for all the people that are existing in our village, they came up with a nice number of thirty-seven, fifty, which is the board adopted. And so now that we're getting past the phase that we can, we'll have our people onboard with the thirty-seven, fifty rate, it's now time that we can look at going up to the full legal limit of the LUEs. And.
Would you please take your discussion outside, please? You're interrupting the business. I'm sorry, man.
No problem, thank you. And so again, you know, every time that I get up here, we talk LUEs, we talk wastewater treatment plant. What you hear out of me is that the people of Salado, the taxpayers, actually paying to, for a limited number of people to get on the wastewater treatment plant. Well, this gives an opportunity for new people that come in that wants to develop a piece of property, add additional houses, businesses or whatever, that we can go in and ask them to pay a fair share of their impact into this, into our new system. So I was thinking about proposing that we raise it to fifty-one, fifty-two, which is the maximum permitted amount. The problem is, is that, I've done a lot of thought on this. The problem is, is that right now, we're, we're in discussions with Brookshures and some of the other places on the west side of the interstate. And if we go to fifty-one, fifty-two, you know, they're gonna be paying that, that new LUE rate. And they're basically in the same boat as people that are currently in the hundred and thirty-plus people that are there. So it wouldn't really be fair to up our rate right before we ask them to come onboard. So with that said, I don't know, I'm taking suggestions on the, how we ought to look at it. Do we look at just new construction? Do we look at grandfather-in-law, current people that, or residences or businesses that are already up and established in Salado? Or how can we provision this ordinance to maximize the, the LUE so that we take some tax burden off of the taxpayers, yet be fair to our existing and our, and our new prospective businesses?
Questions, please.
Don.
Did I say that right?
I'm sorry. Don, I was trying to remember, which month did we establish the LUE? So if I remember right, my motion was that we would go at least a year before we visited. Changing that. I thought it was January, but I can't find those minutes at the moment, I've been kind of looking through them. But I thought my motion was that we would go a year before we would revise those. And I'm, I'm wide open for doing that, but I thought we said it, said it would be that way for a year. When we, when we set those. No, I'm sorry.
Is there an opportunity or is it legal to have once rate for existing and one rate for new development?
Yes, you, you set that up in your ordinance, because the ordinance actually sets that up. It talks about the initial service area from that perspective, and that's what you got. One opportunity, and I don't know, we need to, we need to look at this and run this through, you know, from a trap standpoint. But you could expand those areas that you referenced to make them part of the initial service area. You know, you, you, you talked about the idea of potentially using some of your excess bond money because you can't turn around and roll that back into debt reduction. But you talked about the idea of potentially using some of that excess bond money to help extend the system, you know, to some of these areas you're talking about, the Brookshire, be it, be it up, you know, on the east side or be it on the west side along the highway. And make them part of that initial construction area and potentially encompass them in from that standpoint. Keep in mind that, you know, if they pay for the extension of the line, which is your policy right now, if they're not in that service area and they're extending, they're obligated to pay the construction cost, the design cost, and then we're only allowed to collect the treatment plant portion of the impact fee, which is about sixty to sixty-five percent of that LUE fee, whether it be fifty-one, fifty-two, or whether it be thirty-seven, fifty. So you can have to. You need to be careful, the key thing here is fairness and, and how you deal with people and make sure you're, you're being even handed across the, across the board. It's a cleaner cut to do it all at one time if you're gonna change it. You have the ability, I think, to go in right now, quite frankly, and those people that haven't connected. You've given them an extension by October one, you have the ability to say October two, you increase the fee to fifty-one, fifty-two, if that's what you want to do. I mean, you just need to be fair to everybody in the area you're dealing with.
Other questions, please?
But I think Frank may be right, I'd go back and check, but I think we looked at like a year. We talked about revisiting it after a year, I think is what we, we didn't say we increased it. I think he said we revisit the topic after a year.
Well, the intent was to set it for twelve months.
Yeah.
Get everybody in that wanted to get in, then we could talk about adjusting it, seeing the speed of things coming on, where we were financially, that gave us the opportunity to say, okay, we need to go up five hundred thousand, whatever we need to do.
The thing to keep in mind, and this is, this is, I think, something that may be a pressure piece, is the fact that you've got several subdivisions, and we've talked about it, alluded to it on several occasions, that are knocking on the door. Some of which want wastewater, some of which aren't going to be able to get near wastewater. But some of which want wastewater. Example B, you've got a three hundred and fifty home development that's going into Royal Street across from the church called Sanctuary. You've got a hundred and seventy-four homes that are fixing to go in from a Smith, Love &amp; Royal, the Bears guy. You've got another subdivision that's talking about coming into West Village and Williams, that's a real deal, and they're gonna be wanting service. You've got another subdivision that's talking about wanting some portion of service if possible on Williams Road over by the high school behind Scott and White. You've got many subdivisions that are on the brink or on fringe that are potentially capable of getting service. The ones on the west side, we agreed, we're gonna need to have another plant over there at some point to deal with those folks. This guy up on the hill ain't gonna deal with those guys as much. But the guy on the hill is gonna be filling up pretty quick with those two large subdivisions coming in over at Royal Street. So I, I don't think there's any, I guess my point being this, you know, my, and that is, I think your point's valid and you're starting to look at it now because you've got people knocking on your door at this stage in the game. And I think you, you know, the concept of getting it, getting it right up and forth with the development really does pay for itself as much as possible.
I got a question for you, Don. We've got people used to the thirty-seven, fifty dollar amount, okay? I'm sure the people that are thinking about coming here are looking at the thirty-seven, fifty, okay? If we throw this new one out there, five grand plus, what's gonna be the impact of saying, I really don't want to do this, have a nice day?
Well, in the initial service area, they're gonna have to, because you mandated that by ordinance, it's in front of their property and they have to commit. It's the new guys, it's the new guys that speculate. I mean, Sanctuary, you're obligated to provide wastewater service to them. Bear, you have a letter of commitment, you've granted him from that perspective.
Right, right, but he's familiar with, I think, the thirty-seven, fifty dollar amount, isn't he?
Yeah, but, but you have the ability, the ordinance, the ordinance tells you, if that fee changes, the ordinance, the ordinance specifically spells out at what point the fee is when they file their plan for the development and those type of things. It's, it's the rate at that time, whether it be thirty-seven, fifty, whether it be forty-seven hundred, whether it be fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two. It recognizes the fact that the rate's gonna float, I guess is what I'm getting at at some point. And it was the foresight.
So Bear is at thirty-seven, fifty.
I can pull this commitment letter, but it's.
Actually, he's at twenty-two, fifty, because he only pays a sixty percent, sixty-something percent.
Same with Sanctuary.
See, so I, I don't know why we have to create uncertainty with people. I think we need to set a standard and stick to it. And I don't like this jumping up and down. Deal for this guy, deal for this guy, we need to belly up to the bar, stick with the plan, and then go forward instead of all these changes that would drive me nuts if I was a developer. I would really look for someplace else to develop, I really would. Because it seems like we're just not sure what we're doing. That's just my personal view.
Okay, guys, remember that until motion is on the floor, you cannot have discussion. You can only ask questions. Joe, is there any more questions you'd like to ask? Yeah.
Your Honor. Your Honor, I'd like to just table this or withdraw this whole item until, until me and Don can get together and maybe work out a little bit better plan on how to approach it and to validate what Frank was brought up to. So can I just remove this from the table?
Very well. And whenever you're ready to bring your passion, please do.
Yes, sir.
E. Discuss and consider possible action relating to the development of a wastewater debt restructuring plan for the village of Salado, Texas. Don?
Yes, I put design on there to give you an update of where we are on this. We, we think we've got a pretty good approach and we're gonna work the numbers and make changes a little bit based on our discussions just a moment ago. But again, that, that'll be a piece of the equation. The thought process, as you know, is what can we do to potentially bring down the debt service tax rate? You know, our tax rate has an operations and maintenance, which covers the day-to-day. And that's very small, in fact, it's probably the lowest city operations and maintenance rate in Bell County. And then we have a debt service rate, which basically funds, you know, our, our debt. And that debt is to be funded through twenty thirty-three, so you know, as far as the total debt service. So we worked out the issue and we're tasked with coming up with a game plan. And the plan that we, that we're looking at right now, and then we'll finalize this, we'll work through the budget and let you, let you modify, change, view, whatever. But the plan that we're looking at right now involves a number of elements. When we approved the impact fees and when we approved the rates for the wastewater system, we showed basically a model that really did not have a lot of growth. We were very conservative and kept it at low growth. And we showed a commitment of impact fee revenue going towards debt service production on an annual basis. With a blip in that going up a little bit for a couple of years, I think three or four years down the road. But I think the first couple of years, we talked about a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year going towards debt service production. Keep in mind, that was understanding that we were gonna get full collection and full connection to the system at this point, we're still connecting. So we don't want to deviate from, from the plan that we want to use impact fee revenue towards that, towards that process. That only makes sense, that's one of the reasons it exists. If we increase that impact fee, obviously that's gonna potentially generate more revenue than the thirty-seven, fifty as far as future development goes. So what we thought about was if we were to, if we were to go ahead and invest. So what we thought about was if we were to, if we were to go ahead and invest some of that impact fee money and look at the idea of potentially using some of the interest from that investment of the larger amount of impact fee money, you know, you could potentially use that revenue to go along with whatever, whatever actual impact fee revenue money you're dedicating to also go towards debt service reduction. As the area grows, we've, we've talked about the fact that, you know, you're looking at maybe, what, six hundred homes, you know, just on the east side, not counting what's on the west side. There's rate revenue that's going to be going from those customers coming on north. You could potentially use some of that additional revenue by those customers as far as our monthly service fees go, instead of lowering rates, which you typically would do as the customer base grows larger, the idea would be keeping the rates the same, not raising them, but keeping them the same, and simply using that differential to also go towards debt service reduction. So it's kind of a preface plan that would go through, and it would grow, and it would modify over the years as far as that goes, with, again, all the common goal, try and put as much money as you possibly can towards debt service reduction, okay? Towards bringing that debt service property tax rate down so the citizens as a whole would hopefully pay a little bit less on the debt service side. There's another piece of the equation that we have the ability to use that we've identified, and that is, we've been subsidizing the state's coach plan for several years with general fund money. And so there's, there's, there's money in budget that we've, you know, allocated for years, and there's a place in that budget that we've allocated for years, to, to about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars over the years, each year. So you could potentially continue to keep that allocation in there and simply redirect that towards the debt service reduction as opposed to towards the state's coach plan because it no longer exists. You're not increasing the maintenance operation rate to do that, you're using existing tax dollars that you're going to generate through the system. So you've got interest, you've got MNO money that you've allocated that you could redirect and reuse, you've got impact fee money that you could use, and you've got monthly rate revenue money that you can use once you, once that increased customer base comes on board. I think all of those will work in the direction of doing exactly what it is you want to do, and I think the amount of that, the amount of that reduction is going to increase as more people come on to the system. Initially, the decrease will be probably not significant, but, you know, I think as more folks come on board and then more of these elements in the equation come on board, I think you're going to see some pretty significant reduction, you know, as far as the, as far as the debt service rate over the term of that between now and 2033. But that's kind of what we're looking at, Mayor, we're modeling it right now based on what we end up landing on as far as impact fees, whether we, whether we freeze it, whether we decide to mess with it, you know, those type of things could, could obviously impact how much each piece of that equation picks up towards the debt service reduction. But I hope that makes sense. It's, it's the use of several funds and consolidation of those, those funds to go towards reducing that debt rate. But we'll bring you, we'll bring you the models and everything for approval, but I just wanted to put an item on here to brief you to let you know we're wrapped.
So, Don, you're not considering possible action tonight?
Not tonight, no, sir.
In that case, we can discuss or ask for just two questions.
I'm just going to vote no.
We'll talk about a story.
Right.
Any more questions or comments? Moving on.
Are we, you think, are we moving in a good direction?
Oh, yeah.
On that, does this sound right? Okay.
I certainly think that's important. Discuss and consider possible action establishing the fiscal year 2020 goals and priorities for the village of Salado. Don?
Mayor, as you know, we had a workshop that was held back in early July, right before we did the fourth of July, in fact, on July third. You have before you two and a half pages worth of suggested goals and priorities that were offered up by various members of the board. Those who offered names are off to the side. And Mayor, I think you passed the board that night to look over this list and come tonight with maybe five or seven, that you saw as priority items out of this full list. And so that's where we are tonight, is to get your read as far as those five or seven items. So would you need to reach an agreement and first goals and priorities?
Floor is open for discussion.
Don, of course, you've heard me say that road repairs and tree trimming are on my list of things when you look at this next year. Is there a way that we can get Sanctuary to expend funds, to down Royal, to, since they're going to be the ones that's going to be really increasing that traffic?
I think you'd be hard pressed to do that legally. I think if you tried to hit them from a good neighbor standpoint, you might be able to visit with them about that, but I don't know that quite frankly legally you'd be able to do that.
That's exactly the approach that I think that we, we should take is to, you know, be neighborly, and it's not only, you know, we present it to them that, that is going to benefit every, all the residents out in that area and their businesses and everything that they might be a little bit more receptive to. And that, all that does is make their, their development a lot more attractive to attracting residents in the businesses.
So I meant anyone contribute towards the tree trimming on Royal Street.
Yep. And, and, and surface widening or surface repairs.
And use road widening repairs.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that be one of the goals, Mike?
That's a, that's one of my, my goals, and I think I heard a lot more of the people up here that said that that was high on their list was road repairs. Of course, the, behind, what is it, is it Mill Creek Drive that's behind the, that by Brookshire is through there is that we did the patch, it's just really in pathetic shape right now. And then if you go down through Mill, Old Mill Drive from basically where you come up out of the low water crossing all the way to Chisholm, you know, people are driving in the middle of the road because of the tree limbs have just really grown up.
Tree trimming load in there?
Yes.
Yeah, it's warranty at all on that road work that was done, it was horrible.
That whole roads?
On Salado Plaza.
Yeah.
So there's no warranty on that?
It was a patch job.
From the beginning?
Yeah.
We paid a lot of money for it.
We paid an awful lot of money.
Okay, let's take down Mitch one.
We'll mention this, if I were to ask a question, road repairs being one, trees second?
Road repairs one, trees second.
I have two.
Harvey is in golf carts.
No. I think my number one thing was to get the Economic Development Advisory Council Committee up and running as a priority. I think that's the most important thing we can do to, to steer us in the right direction. We've got to get that going as quick as possible. That's my number one choice. And my number two choice, I think, would have to be the annexation of FM twenty-two sixty-eight and the one by Mr. Coachman, FM twenty-four eighty-four.
A lot of things are already started on it.
We can fund all that out of the road account, both those items.
Okay, others, please?
I'm going to second the road repairs, but add in roads and parking.
Roads and what?
Parking.
Parking.
Because I've got several parking issues on there too, I mean.
Public parking.
Okay. Any other goals?
We're definitely tree trimming too, I mean, I completely agree with that, but my priority is the road place.
My two are on here.
My, my two are all here.
Okay. Run them.
Debt reduction, MNO reduction.
Have you already started on the exploring options for City Hall?
We've started the initial discussion working on available properties.
We don't have a, like, an estimate on what this property is valued at, right?
Well, I know it's valued at, it's valued at under two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, that means resale value, not like.
Oh, resale value, no, we've not had an appraisal, and you could, you could probably get an appraisal, probably ought to get an appraisal on this property as well as the PB property.
That's what I was thinking, is appraise the whole.
Yeah.
Is that an expen, I mean, is it expensive to get that done?
I think probably five thousand, nearly five hundred.
Lex got budgeted this year.
Still think it's important to get the subdivision ordinance revised and up the stuff, and then also the overlay districts that we need to establish.
What was the other one?
I promise you, the subdivision works in the ordinance and the overlay districts. It's on the second page. Just need to get the, I'm sorry. This one. Overlay district, let's see.
Hey, I'll fill that in, Randy.
I was just thinking about that, like, I mean, I know I, it's on here kind of higher up, but we can't wait for another flood for it to become an important issue again.
I agree.
And we actually were just talking about that today at the open house for, for Brad Buckley is, we were approached, he and I both several times about what are we going to do about all this water? Your name came up. But, um, yeah, we really, I think, from our side, at least need to know what we're looking at inside the village in terms of developing properties with known problems just because FEMA doesn't have it identified. That's a problem, because there's a lapse there.
So what I've got is I have road repairs, I have tree trimming, I have economic development up and running, I've got annexation. I have, I'm going to call it debt service, I'm going to say tax reduction, debt service as well as MNO possible. I've got subdivision ordinance rewrite, I've got overlay district, I've got drainage, and then I have public parking.
Can we address the things in Pace Park that we already agreed to do?
Yes.
Don, are we going to be ready to workshop the expansion of the sewage system when you get some, a little bit more defined cost estimates in there?
Absolutely. And again, what we're all talking, as you all know, we're all talking about, we're talking about potentially the city stepping in, potentially helping fund the expansion of both sides of the highway.
Towards the hotels?
Okay, one of us.
Yeah, I think if you do one side, you're really obligated.
We have no idea what the cost estimate is on that, I mean, didn't we have a cost estimate before the hotels?
But we're updating this cost estimate, the last estimate we had in both sides of the highway were the neighborhood of the platform, they're maybe four hundred and ninety thousand.
Each?
Each. Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Don, how many did you come up with, what you were going to? Ten?
We're crazy, we're out of the number.
I'll entertain a motion, take those ten.
Could you read those back to us one second?
Absolutely. Road repairs, tree trimming, economic developments, annexation, public parking, debt tax rate reduction, MNO reduction, cost reduction, subdivision ordinance rewrite, overlay district, and drainage. Local, local drainage opposed to water drainage.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'm going to move, we adopt these ten.
Second.
Motion being made and seconded, discussion.
Question.
Question has been called, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise. Passes. That is a great list of goals. Like, really great, Mr. Mayor. And I have all the confidence in the world that you have to do. Okay, the final bit of business this evening. Discuss and consider issues relating to development of the proposed fiscal year 2020 operating budget for the village of Salado.
This is an item that'll appear on every agenda until we adopt the budget, just one quick note I pass on to you, and that is, in that interim period between our last meeting and now, we did receive our net taxable value. Just so you know, for your, for your education, it's the net taxable value is two hundred and forty-six million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. So that'll be the number we use when we start calculating the tax rate for this, for this coming year. Just also, the other thing to keep in mind about the tax situation, I know there's a little bit of confusion out there, the legislative changes related to our taxation process, getting the rollbacks and all those type of things, they will go into effect next budget cycle, not this budget cycle, and they will be significantly changing to us, not a bad thing. But the thing I also caution you about is this, and that is, the legislature comes into session after our next budget cycle, and so my hunch is you're going to see more of a change taking place. There's some significant movement already towards more issues relating to cities progressing in those places. Thanks to the city boss.
Don, what was it in the end dollar figure again?
That's two hundred and, two hundred. Now, that's your net taxable value for this budget. So that's what you're going to calculate your budget, that's what you're going to calculate your taxes.
That is eight million higher than what she told me three months ago.
And the thing to understand, and this is what is really important, is that folks understand, and that is, we're under the old, we're under the rollback calculation process, and it means we start with an effective tax rate. And the effective tax rate is a tax rate with today's values, it generates the same amount of revenue as last year, which means your starting point for your tax is going to be lower than your current tax rate, no question. In this situation, probably very significantly lower, and you're only allowed to go up to the eight percent part before your subjects roll in. And so there's not a lot of room, you're not going to see translation, you're not going to see a lot of play as far as your tax rate goes this year, unless you want to try to like, I'm not suggesting.
So one point five is only, what, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-eight thousand dollars? If one cent brings in eighteen thousand and then half of that, twenty-seven thousand?
Well, calculate it off the current value, you can see, see, that, that, that one cent seventeen value, that changes your yield of taxes, except just look at your, multiply it any time back.
Did, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Did she, did she share with you the percent increase in evaluation?
Yeah, I got that, I don't have that issue.
When I talked to her three months ago, it seemed like they were at one seventy-two and she told, or one seventy-five, and it was going to one ninety-two, and now you're saying two hundred, so.
Net taxable is two forty-six, five seventy?
When, when will we see our first D I N S rate back to us?
We, we have, we have their calculation sheet that we've just received. So we've got, we've got the tax, the tax calculation sheet relating to rollback, relating to MNO and debt. and debt service at this point.
So we know what that rate is, what it's gonna be, and it's definitely gonna go down.
On the debt service, yes, the debt service.
No, no, not that one.
Yeah, your starting point, what I'm getting at is this, your starting point on the end of the year, it's gonna, you're not gonna have much ability to grow that MNO rate, I guess is my point.
But we don't know what that eight percent equates to dollars.
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me, we have that tax calculation sheet. And it's, all that will be presented, we're presenting the budget, the mayor's budget gets filed Monday, and that data will be in there along those lines. But just, no, it's not a lot of additional revenue you can take in the rollback that you're gonna get. Kind of the same situation we ran into last year. Everybody instantaneously thinks that all the rates, when your values run up, you're gonna be flush, but you're really not. In fact, you're getting flushed because of the way the tax law works as far as where you start in the federal tax rate.
Other comments to Don, please? Don, I know you've looked at this over and over again, we've discussed it over and over again. We cannot run this village on one point one million dollars. Salaries, infrastructure, the things that we talked about for goals tonight, we can't do that. Again, we're faced with an increase for new schools, which we needed. We're faced with another rise if we were to raise this. And of course, there's the sewer side that's going to add to it. But we're in a critical position. There's not many more years we can scale down. Because if we try, really try, there'll be no way that we can do what Salado has always done, really looking good and really being a place for people to want to come to. It's a hard decision. I've got a lot of discussion on this, so you're gonna bring it up every time, Mike?
It's on every agenda, that's kind of our game plan, it's always been our approach, just in case you wanna talk about different budgets. I'll circulate, like I said, you'll get the budget, what you're gonna get, you're gonna go, once it's filed, you'll get a, literally a line item, just like we did last year, line item by line item budget, that has description of every line item in it, and we'll break down the full tax implications as far as, as far as the situation goes. I will tell you this, and that is, we're not proposing, based on yours and my discussion, Mayor, we're not proposing to roll that claim.
No.
So, there are people out there thinking that, or gonna go out there and start telling people that, that's not the case. The goal is to try to keep the taxes low as possible.
I hesitate making this thought because I can just wait and hear what's gonna happen when I make this thought. If we thought anything else about the sixty-five-year-old freezing taxes, if we thought anything about that? Yeah. You hear that occasionally on the streets. Some people feel like that at sixty-five, everyone that's across that, whenever it were, if it ever becomes a part of this, they would be grandfathered. And the age would either be raised, maybe seventy, or there would be no freezing taxes, period, regardless of age. And that is, that's more controversial than golf carts and deer.
I must tell you, I have not seen, and maybe it's happened, I'm sure somewhere in this state, but it's a rarity, when those type of exemptions get put in place, they don't ever go away. And I will tell you, there was an attempt made in this last legislative session to try to provide relief to some of the communities in the area of Hood, to some of the, some of the military-related exemptions, and you got fought back aggressively in the field, so I, no.
Well, folks, you've heard what we deal with and trying to deal with. Please don't go out of here and passing a rumor or even entertaining a rumor, slap it down. We've got a lot of discussion, and we're not indicating any of this. Not one bit of it, we're just trying to find a way to keep this community the way we all want. It's difficult, very difficult. Well, I'll entertain a motion.
So may.
Is there a second?
Second.